You'll join in the flag salute, please.
Pleased to be here.
To the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome everyone to the January 3 Bourbon County Commission meeting, first one of the year. I've got high expectations for 2023. I hope everything's going to run smooth and we get a lot of things accomplished. Hello, Ben. So, uh, we've got to wait on Clifton for this one, so. How are you, Nelson?
Good.
Good.
Good, good.
All in force, duty good?
Yeah, loving it.
I thought I seen you the other day.
I'm sure. Daytime?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm on days.
Yeah. Busy over there. We'll get on the agenda here in a minute, waiting on our third commissioner here. He comes now. Mr. Commissioner Clifton Beth. Okay. First item of business is reorganization of the board. That means this committee, we had to pick a new chairman this morning. I'm sorry. If you have a question?
No, no, I didn't see the approval minutes on there.
Oh, okay. Yeah. Yeah, it's right after that, so.
Reorganization for, I have taken motion to for Chairman Harris to remain as chairman.
A second.
Any discussion there, Chairman?
No. I think this is where I'm supposed to say thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much. The first year went by fast, I can tell you that, and a lot of ups and downs, but this group works good together. And I hope I've expressed to everyone, I am just a third commissioner that conducts the meeting. I have no other authority, no power than any of these other two. That's not intent. The chairman's intent is to try to run the meeting and try to keep peace. So, moving right along. We need to do the land bank board today and ready board today? I make a motion to appoint Commissioner Beth to the ready board.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. We need to appoint someone to the land bank board, which I'm currently on that, but I don't mind staying. It's a good board, but I'll do whatever you guys want to do.
Land bank? Yeah, I make a motion to have Chairman Harris remain on the land bank board.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Is that it for today?
I think.
Okay. I think that's it. Approval minutes, please.
Make motion to approve the minutes from last, this Tuesday's meeting.
Second.
And it's ending special meeting, yeah. December 20th to 29th.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Yeah, I think it's your turn.
Is it my turn?
I think so.
Mr. Eric Bailey, Robyn Gray, report, please. Happy holidays.
Yeah, safe for you guys. First off is the Colbert. Approval for December. Three Colbert's. That one's tall in December. Next for you is your fuel, monthly fuel report.
Really came down, didn't it?
It did.
That's a big plus for everybody, so.
That is a big plus.
Should help the economy, I hope. A little bit of people will feel more comfortable to get out and move around.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Sidewalk update. We're running a little, little further behind than we wanted to be. Mother Nature hasn't cooperated the best with us and vacation and leave. But anyhow, we're hoping to get the ADA painted this week and get that opened back up, and then we will be moving forward with the next phases and getting that, get that completed.
Really good.
Yeah. Chad and his crew is doing an outstanding job. Appreciate that. Also, I wanted to let you know, K-Camp grant. We received $2,000 from K-Camp for strobe lights and for our plow trucks and a tarp for the landfill trailer. It was a risk avoidance grant, so I wanted to let you know that we did receive that. That's a positive note. On the not so positive, on the bridge grants that we applied for, we did not receive one of the grants. I believe we applied for three grants, two off system and one on an RS road or one of our main roads. But anyhow, we did not receive one of the grants this go around. So, we will, when it opens back up again, we'll apply again.
Yeah. And that's not surprising that the first time you not get it, so.
Right, right. And I've got the numbers. I mean, the amount of.
And that's the big bridge on Clifton, the north one.
The big, big one there, and then the one, there was some, oh, off systems. One was on Jayhawk Road, and then one was out on, what was it, Grand? Somewhere out, yep. So, but they had, on the, which one? On the off system, they received 99 applications for projects totaling 93.2 million, and they awarded 20.5 million. So, we didn't draw on that. And then on the big one, the one that was up by Clifton's area, 114 applications requesting assistance for 160.6 million, and they were able to award 21 million to 11 projects, so.
So, is, did you get the one on Grand and Jayhawk?
We didn't get any. No.
Didn't get any of them? Okay.
No. None. Those were, those were two different grants. One was for off system, and then the other one was a, and I forget the name. It's the one Bourbon County Ready helped us apply for.
So, is it the one on Grand, the one that's west of Highway 3 away?
Yes.
Like that huge washout area?
Yep, yep, yep. That the farmers have kind of made their own path to go around.
Oh, yeah. It's pretty bad.
Yes, it is. So, anyhow, that's, I want to give you an update on that. Did get through our first winter storm. That was a fun one. Temperatures got pretty frigid. Found out our weak links in our equipment. We did have a truck or two go down. One of them was chain on a spreader, and another one went into limp mode, def issue. So, anyhow, we are dealing with that, and we made it. We had some technical difficulties with the, on the second round that we got with the rain that froze on us. Got material down, and then the temperature dropped drastically, and it got slick. There were some areas that was super slick and, and.
Not surprised. It was patchy areas. You have some slick here, and you go another mile away.
Absolutely. That, that was wild, so.
It's a different kind of little storm there.
As I like to say, no two storms are the same.
Yeah.
So, you do the best you can with them and learn from them and move on. So, but anyhow, we're getting our equipment back around, and we'll be ready for the next round, so.
And you have one.
Yeah. Calling you, Jim. I'm calling you.
Well, you know, I could probably still do it.
Yeah, I know you can. I know, I know.
I hate to say this, but every once in a while I get a mailbox. Accidentally, of course.
I think the record right now is seven and a quarter miles. So, as long as you don't beat that, we're good. So, anyhow. Equipment purchases. We, we did make a couple of equipment purchases. One of them is a sidearm ditcher. It's called a baby hurricane sidearm ditcher. It's pulled behind a tractor. This will give us the opportunity to go around and open up ditches. As we all know, our ditches are in dire need of being opened up. Bought the equipment used. It was a great purchase. It has never been used. It was offloaded off the truck and left set. So, anyhow, we pick it up tomorrow. We will be getting started.
Good.
Soon as we get it back, and we can work when it's wet, and we work when it's dry.
I would comment on that. Eric sent me just some literature to look at it, because a lot of my background is equipment. And this is a piece of equipment that Eric could use year-round, where we can't get in the ditch with a motor grader if it's soapy or wet. This machine works in the wet, so it's going to be a big benefit for our ditching program.
Right.
Now, is it a perfect ditch? No. But it'll move the water and let the road dry out.
Right.
It's, it's a good start, progress going forward. We've got to do something with our ditches, and that's a good call, so.
Yep, yep. Appreciate that. And then the other, we bought a small compact roller off Purple Wave. This will be able to help us do small cuts and repairs in the road. Right now, in order to do that, we either have to roll it in with a tire or use a plate compactor, and we're just not getting the compaction that we need. So, we've got a very, very good deal on this piece of equipment. So. Okay. Anyhow, just letting you know that. We'll get it picked up this week as well. We did get a blast complete at Beth last, last week, 42,314 tons. 42314. So, we, we will be moving up there here in the next week or two to get started crushing there. We're out at Shepherd now, crushing the best we can with the material we have there. We went to the point out there of pulling the big rocks out, lining them up, using the jackhammer that we have for the mini excavator, busting those big rocks up and running them through the crusher, so.
Your lives and what your material wants to do.
Yes. So, let you know that. Also, Chairman Harris, let you know the pothole on 225th. We, we put some coal patch in it. When we get.
Okay.
Weather gets a little better, what have you, we'll take the patcher out and we'll seal it up and get that.
Thank you very much.
But we've temporated it for now. Want to invite everyone to a retirement party this Friday for Charlie Blue. He will be retiring. We'll be having a retirement party at 11:30 out at Public Works. Charlie, I'm not sure how many years he's been with us. It's been a.
Eight or nine.
Yeah. So, Charlie's done a good job for us, and wish him well, and, and.
We finally make a motion. Make a motion. All three commissioners possibly could be at this luncheon.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. I intend to go. Charlie and I started together at the coal plant when I was 17.
Wow. Bet there's some stories there.
No, no, I want to remember.
Okay. All right. And then, last thing I have, next week, there'll be five of us, including myself. We'll be going to Nashville. We'll be leaving Tuesday. We're training on our rock crusher.
Good.
So, just wanted to give you the heads up on that, and that'll be our final phase, training phase.
Good.
That came with the crusher. So, any questions for me?
No, I, I want to give you my wish list for the year, of course, but most of you already know. I just want to do it in-house here, of course.
Okay.
And this is a wish list.
Okay.
I know Clifton, his area gets 99.9% asphalt this year, because that's the condition that we did last year. We agreed to it, so. But if there's anything left, we need to start addressing Eagle Road through a grant, possibly through Federal Highway Administration, because that's kind of a haul road, commercial road, commerce road, if we want to call it that. But then I've asked Shane, and Eric, I would ask that you would work with him to, 10 years ago or so, the city did a study on overpass on about 20th to 23rd. What appear that alley didn't look right. So, I'm asking Shane to do a grant, ask for a study for an overpass on Jayhawk Road, because those trains are stopping three hours at a time, and ambulance can't get through, and the fire trucks can't get through. So, we, I mean, we, we've got to try something there.
Absolutely.
So, I like to have that on our list, our target.
Okay.
The bridge we talked about, the metal bridge on 255th, needs, and we, we didn't, all that shoring underneath a couple of years ago, three or four years ago, but still that metal needs to be treated with some kind of, something that would knock some of that old rust and paint off, that, that old metal one. Is that 255th?
Yeah, I think it is, but is that south, or north of Birch or Calvary? Trying to think.
I don't know. I'd have to look.
I'm with you. I can't, I want to say Birch.
Yeah.
North of Birch.
Then I would like to start a study of some type, and it is going to take a grant. There, it'd be 245th Norton, go to Pitts House.
Yep.
That lower area is becoming very narrow. And I had some engineers look at that years ago, and it's so narrow, and the shoulders are so steep, the shoulders are slipping out, which caused it asphalt to break out.
Just to interject with that, with that overpass study, we can put that in because that would be a potential route.
Yeah, and it's a great idea. Yeah, absolutely. It's, I went through there over the weekend. It's just to the point, you know, when you do get to it, we might have to just do some work out there and make it safer with gravel temporarily, because it's very narrow, and it, that asphalt's giving away because of the shoulders giving away. But you're going to have to get some right away. Oh, that's a pretty big project.
Yeah.
Lot of water through there, too, so we need a pretty good engineering study to handle that water. Anyway, that's my wish list for the year.
That's your wish list. Okay.
I don't want much, do I?
Anybody else, or, or do you want to get with me on your wish list, or, or you got something else for me, or?
Hate to bring it up again.
Okay, bring it up.
Well, we talked about Yale Road, tearing it up.
Yep.
Um, I, people are very, very unhappy about that.
Mm-hmm.
So, um.
Of tearing it up?
Of tearing it up.
Okay.
Like, absolutely no one that lives on the road wants it tore up. I don't know if we can look at doing something else. And they, they, they weren't even saying, come here and fix it. They were like, just leave it alone if you're going to tear it up. But I know some, there's some pretty bad potholes on there, but if we could come up with some other way to figure out how to get them filled, try something new or something.
You know, it, certainly District 1, but this is a prime complicat of Eagle Road. It became a safety issue, and I will give it to Commissioner Fisher. He had to reclaim to make it safe for the school buses, and that's where you're about at on that road.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's a tough one. It, it really is. To do it right, it, it needs to be tore up. There needs to be base rock put down. Needs to be compacted.
Well, I don't, I mean, if there's, because if it gets tore up now, it'll be years before it gets repaved. So, maybe if we can patch it up until we can tear it up and pave it the next year or something, you know, kind of budget for that or save up for it or plan for it. So, whenever it does get tore up, at least we can get it repaved. Because I don't, you know, they're probably right when they say, you know, 10 years or more.
Oh, I, I don't know when it's Eagle tore up.
That would be a good guess, because Eagle's ahead of it, and all Clifton areas ahead of it. So, I mean, it's, the list goes on. And I, I would predict it'll be three to five years before we get Eagle done total. And it's just three miles. So, it's, it's a tough one.
Yeah.
And that has a lot of traffic.
So, same old issue.
Okay.
But there'll be riots in Mapleton.
Something, Commissioner Nelson, consider the safety part of it as you move forward on that road.
Yeah.
And I'm talking to the Public Works Director now, so.
Yeah.
Consider that. And if, if you can maintain the patch holes, you, you don't have any problems.
Yeah.
I mean, we won't have any problem, because you patched one, you've got a new one next week.
That's exactly what's happened up there. We went and patched, and right at the end of the patch, or right there at the patch, moisture got in, and the subbase failed, and the subbase is pumping up, and.
Yeah. If you want a good road, 10 years now, Eric needs to reclaim it.
Yeah.
But that's your call.
Yeah, so. Anything else?
Thank you.
All right.
Could you head to Dustin in Nashville?
Yeah, and Chad.
Phase, all right.
There's going to be some food consumed, so.
All right. I told you on there, can't tell them they're coming.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Have a good trip, so.
Thank you.
I'll see you. Okay. Approval accounts payable. I don't have any questions.
I know, so.
I hear a motion to approve it.
Yeah, I make a motion to approve accounts payable. It's the stuff we got emailed, just, yeah.
Yeah.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Courtney does have a lot of stuff for you guys to sign.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Matt Quick, NRP renewal program. I've asked Matt really to go into some detail, trying to explain to the public what this exactly is.
Right.
So, a lot of people still don't understand. It's a great program. So, you have the floor, Mr. Quick.
Well, what we, one of the reasons I'm here is we're at the end of the five-year cycle on this deal, and want to come down to that end. That needs to be reapproved by the commissioners, saying that they want to continue this, this program. And I see from the amount of applications that we got this year, I mean, it's, it's a great program, and it really needs to be continued. People are really taking advantage of it, and it's a good thing for the taxpayers, a good thing for the, for the county. Basically, what it is, NRP is a Neighborhood Revitalization Plan program. It's a rebate for improvements on your property. So, if you take, let's say you have a blank piece of ground, and you want to build a house on it, you're going to take and get a 95% rebate back on that building. The increase in your taxes, so if your taxes go from 1,000 to 2,000, you're going to get a 95% rebate back on that $1,000 difference between the two for five years on residential. It's a great program. It doesn't have to be a house. You can add, it has to be at least $15,000 in value added to the property. So, you know, painting your house, that's probably not going to, not going to get it. But if you're, if you're adding a garage, you're adding a wing on your house, you're adding a bedroom, you're adding something on to the property itself, then it's very worthwhile to come in and talk to our, our department about, you know, signing up for this. There's a $50 one-time fee for it. It's good for residential, commercial, the historical district downtown, that that's through the city. It's a little different. But it's a great program, and man, we've really had a lot of people taking advantage of it. We have people coming in at least once a week to get applications for it. And, and it helps my department, too. It helps us keep track of, of new construction and things like that that are going on out in the county as well. So, great program. Really think if, you know, anybody's thinking about doing, you know, on farm buildings, anything like that, any of that kind of stuff, all qualifies. So, people need to come in and talk to our department about it. Give us a call.
Good.
So, so what we're at is the five-year renewal on it is up. It ended on December 31st of '22. So, we need to, I don't know how we renew it, what the.
I have some questions.
Okay.
So, two questions, actually.
Okay.
Why five years? And why 10 on commercial? And why 15,000? Why not 7,500?
Well, that's, yeah, I mean, that's something we can look into. This is the plan that was put in place.
Right, right. And I know, I know that you, you, it was way, it was before you, but I guess.
Right. And I have looked at, at another county's, and they do 7,500. They, instead of, instead of that, and they do a breakdown per year. It's a different percentage that you earn back each year.
So, is this not from the state, then? We control this?
We control this, yeah.
Okay.
We put this together. So, this is a deal, probably need, you know, making changes in that stuff. We probably need to talk to Justin and see what, what we need to do to, or if we want to make changes to it and do that. Now, it gets more complicated, that one that I looked at, that each year is a different percentage that you get back. I mean, it's.
Sure. Well, I mean, I don't, I don't think we need to make anything more complicated. But I, I would, personally, I would like to lower the 15,000 and raise the five years.
No, that's fine.
Myself.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
I think that's a great idea.
And still keep the 95%.
Yeah, I'll work that.
There's no sense in complicating it, in my opinion.
No, I agree.
But I don't know the numbers. I don't know how they break out.
Right. So, do we want to table this until Justin and me here, and we can have a discussion on what we want, what changes?
Well, we can table it till next week and think about it.
Right.
I would like to, I would make a, I don't know. I guess if somebody comes in this week before next Tuesday to do one.
Right. I mean, it's going to be a deal where we are going to continue.
Good.
Would may just be some changes in, in the amount in that. Can we just say that until, if we take applications between now and then?
We're hopefully going to make it a sweeter deal.
Right, right. And in that time, I'll get, I'll, I have one from another county. I'll look and see if there's others out there that we can, we can get, and we can kind of look at what they're doing on it. That work?
Sounds great. Thank you very much. And anyone who has any questions, please contact Mr. Matt Quick, the county appraiser, because this is a great program. My son used it. It's really a good program, so. Okay, moving right along. Terry Holsey.
Good morning. We are applying for the Craft Grant through the Kansas Department EMS. I just asked it for your signature. Dr. Burke signed it. I've signed it. We just have to have your signature to finish the middle.
Okay. Can you explain to public just a little bit what it is?
For the Craft Grant?
Yeah.
Craft Grant, we're applying for a Hamilton ventilator and another Lucas CPR device. And then we also applied for two more LifePak 15 monitors for the trucks.
Good. Okay. Sounds great.
And then.
I remember we talked about this some time ago.
Right. I also applied for the Fort Scott, I think it's called the Fort Scott Area Foundation now. It used to be part of the Mercy Foundation, but since the Mercy Foundation dissolved, I also applied for a grant through them, which didn't need any signatures other than mine.
What would be the purpose of that grant?
More equipment.
More equipment. Good.
So, we, we just had a special meeting for a different medical director, so.
Well, because this fell into December.
Okay, got you. Good enough. Make a motion to allow, you want to look at those, Nelson? Make a motion to allow Chairman Harris to sign this, well, Terry, and get it signed and go from there, except for the two grants that she's applying for, for equipment for EMS.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
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 It's just that first page, Jim.
Hold the first page.
That little box there. Right there.
Well, 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 well.
Says, I think it says, no.
Nope, to the left.
To the left.
Where your name's not at.
Yes.
Okay. Do you want my name there?
I want your name there. I think it wants printed, signature, your email, and phone number, I think.
I should probably put my glasses on, right.
And we also ended the month with 254 calls. We've been busy.
Average of over eight a day.
Pretty nice grants. Much-needed equipment there. Thank you very much, so.
You're welcome. Very much needed.
Get the federal state to help us a little bit. We like their money.
I will. Yes. Okay. That's all I have.
Thanks, Terry.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. Ms. Ashley Shelton, County Clerk.
I have resolutions for this year. The first one, I have the holiday resolution. It is the same as last year. I did not add Juneteenth, because we didn't have that last year. There was a pullout. The counties in Kansas are about 50/50 as to who is off and who is not that day, so I left ours the same as last year. There is the gap waiver for accounting. There is the designation of depositories and official publication carrier. And then there is a rural opportunity zone grant. It's the same as previous. We do not contribute any money, but we do participate in that.
I want for depository, we need to wait till we address this, whereas the bank bids, before we have anything to do with this resolution?
It's going to take a while to change that, and that lists all of the banks that we have any kind of money at. And I had Patty look at that as well. So, I think we need to go ahead and do it, and then if we make changes, we would just need to update it.
What's the gap one?
That, the gap waiver of accounting principles, because we don't follow GAAP.
Okay.
And that's another one that we do every year.
And let the holiday schedule the same as last 2021?
Correct.
Well, then just list all banks. Now, if we move this active account, we have to do another one?
Yes, I would update it.
Okay.
So if we don't contribute money to this, uh, deal, ROZ, what's our involvement? Like, what does that look like?
We have to opt into it for applicants to qualify for the opportunities through that program. But we choose not to, we don't do any matches. So they can still participate, but we aren't going to match.
Those people, entities in our county can still participate in it. We just don't put any money in it.
We're going to approve all of them?
You're going to motion each individual one?
You, you can make a motion and put them all in one if you want.
As stated by, I make a motion to approve the four resolutions as stated by County Clerk Ashley Shulman.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
The next thing I have is the KAC renewal. It is $3,304.47. Do you guys want to renew your annual membership?
I have a question to renew the KAC renewal.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Um, the second thing, we got a letter from Coney, if that's how you say it. They do our elevator work. Their prices are increasing. I don't know who else works on elevators, but if you change that, I don't know if that voids our warranty. So I just wanted to let you know that that, we did get a letter from them that services may go up.
From what? From what?
Coney. Um, it doesn't specifically say. It just says that, like, metal has increased and different things have increased, so their price is 4.95%. It doesn't give a specific dollar amount.
Are they going to come do work on it or something?
I mean, yeah, if there's, I know we have warranty through them because they have done work on the elevator, but they're the ones that service and keep the elevator and the courthouse running.
I don't see an issue. I think it'd be hard. We'd have a pretty difficult time finding somebody else to do it. Because I know that's a very specialized job. Not just anybody can work on an elevator, legally, anyway.
The next thing I have is a letter that I received. The Sixth Judicial Coroner is retiring. They've tried to find a replacement. They have not been able to find someone to replace him, so they are going with forensic medical. Miami County gets to make that decision because of population between the counties that are in that district. They are, it's $21,000 annually. It says that they will, at a later date, ask for one-third from each county, which would be $7,000. And they haven't asked for that at this time, but I wanted to let you know that that is, that is what we received.
So what were we paying prior?
I don't know that we paid anything, because my understanding in this letter is that Miami County paid that because it was part of his health director contract with them, that he also was the coroner for the Sixth Judicial District.
Yeah. Including this $21,000, will we still get individual bills or any autopsies and things like that?
Yes, because we have forensic medical is who we use for the county. This is just the Sixth Judicial, the Court District. Which is the next thing on my list. Forensic Medical sent a letter, and their prices are going up as well.
Well, I'm just curious, because it said District Coroner. Is it Coroner?
And at this time, they have not requested payment from us. But it does say at a later date that they will probably request that we pay a third of that.
Yeah, I guess, if you guys want to read that. It's just stating Miami County controls it, so.
And the last thing I am going to hand out to you is reports that were filed in my office by the county attorney. One is in regards to the investigation. One is in regards to a response from a letter submitted by Susan Bancroft to you. And so these will become subject to Cora and public record.
Now, is this the letter that was all over Facebook?
I'm assuming. It was filed in my office on December 20th, but I have not released it with Cora request, because it was not presented in a meeting to you at that point. So it will now be...
You did your part.
Subject to Cora.
Thank you. Okay. What do you need in the motion room?
No, she just has to hand it to us.
Okay. Thank you. You're done?
Yep.
Okay. Laura, you're on the board. Morning.
Good morning. Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Happy New Year.
This is just our follow-up meeting, um, from my request a few weeks ago to have my part-time person become full-time. Just a reminder that we are only 35-hour workweek. Some people are confused. Courthouse is only open 40 hours. So, full-time employee is 35 hours because an hour is automatically deducted for their lunch. So, we're only, full-time personnel is only 35 hours. So, she works 20 hours now. I'm just asking for her to go up to full-time, which I am providing out of my tech, $10,000 to go towards my CIC. So, in essence, I am paying for that. It's just the benefits that it is causing. And that is, so I can help more with the road records. Matt just informed me that they're going out on the road, so we can work on the, the roads that you guys wanted to get to the 1987 reappraisal maps, trying to get on to one road map. And they're going to go work on the roads, drive the roads tomorrow. So we're going to be working on more of the road records. And that is one of the reasons, plus the surveyors.
Do you think we're still a year or two away from a new map of the roads?
Well, depends on what, how much time we have to get to dedicate. We haven't had a meeting in probably about three months. So it kind of depends on what everybody's schedule is.
I understand.
And everything. So, we're working on it.
I know you are. It's a lot of hard work.
Yeah. We're starting in the southwestern part of the county and working, trying to work over, and then move up and kind of work it in a pattern, so we can not miss anything.
Good for you. Any discussion, gentlemen? Questions?
Well, I've got some discussion. I guess, I know you and I talked a little bit about how much money additionally are you asking for exactly? I know that you needed, like, another...
It was with benefits and everything. It was about $20,000 additional. And that's with, with the benefits. The benefit is the thing that is, um...
Susan?
So...
So you're taking $10,000 out of something, though, to pay for that part of that? Is that my understanding?
So she'll be able to cover the wages and the general fund. The benefits will be the, the biggest piece of it, but you only need to cover an employee benefits fund.
Yeah.
There is some cash available there, but that's kind of been held back for increases or changes or anything we're doing. So it's, that would be a decision.
She's going to have to start training someone. Listen, you can't hire someone and train them in 30 days and retire.
Well, no, no. No.
It'll take years to train someone.
Exactly, yes. And with working on, no one else is trained in the mapping, working with the road and bridge, you know? And I love doing it, you know, don't get me wrong. I love doing that. But I can't do that and not have somebody doing, helping with what I'm hired to do and what my constituents elect me to do. And, you know, my deputy can't do that all. And you guys wanted to try to get one map, and that's what Eric and Matt and I were working on. And nobody's going into surveying. So that's where, you know, they're emailing us more and more to look some of that stuff up. With me being here 18 years, I'm the one that they look to, because I can read the, as Nelson found out, looking at some of those old road records, they're hard to read. And you've got to be able to understand what they mean by the rod and the chains and just reading the writing. And some of them don't know how to do that. And...
Most people don't know how to do it.
So, that's what I'm asking for. So I've got a lot of it covered. It's the benefits that...
Any other question, discussion, gentlemen?
Well, I, I guess I've got some discussion. You, you've made a good case for wanting this, you know, full-time employee. But my, my question is, since we, we stayed revenue neutral, we've got the sheriff's office that has three positions that are no longer being funded by grants, so they're going to have to get those funded somehow. We've got, you know, the SRO position, we're still, still trying to figure out, you know, they've got to get benefits somehow. So I'm just trying to figure out how we can justify making a full-time employee there to do the mapping, which technically isn't actually traditionally the job of the register of deeds office, to take that away from potentially the sheriff's office, which I think is in a bad spot right now. So that's my kind of...
I have not looked at the other two position grants. The SRO and U235 is funded for remaining of this school year by the MOU and the grant I looked at. So, there's funding there for 2022, 2023 school year, U235. Now, the problem with funding, there's no budget, money budgeted for next fall. So, but we didn't, we also got a request from U234, and we didn't fund them either at the discretion of advice from the sheriff, because he said there wasn't no money. So, and I agreed with him, there wasn't no money. So, anyway. More discussion, Clifton?
I mean, I'll have some during my comment time, so, of, of my yearly goals that's going to affect employees.
Okay.
I guess a little more to add to that. I mean, you do a good job. There's no drama coming out of your office. It's not like, nothing against you or your office, but you're getting it done slowly. Is there really any hurry on the getting the mapping done? I mean, as long as it's getting done eventually, maybe it shouldn't take priority over something like the sheriff's office. That's just my opinion.
No, but are you wanting to tell the surveyors that are sending in more documents because they can't make it in to the office because people aren't coming in, because nobody's going into surveying, that I'm sorry, you're going to have to make that trip into town? It's, it's not just to do the mapping.
Yeah.
It's also taking the time to go look at the maps, looking at the surveys, because they don't have, they're out in the field trying to do a survey for the constituents and the taxpayers. They're about four months behind. So they're emailing us, asking us, could you go to the book and send this or look at this, because I can't find a, a corner point or, or a corner reference and take a picture and email it to me real quick. And because if they have to stop in their field and come into town, you know?
Yeah.
So, it's 50-50. I mean, we'll do whatever.
I mean, as far as surveyors go, I mean, you're talking about paid surveyors, I assume?
Yes, we are.
I mean, that's their job.
Yes, it is.
We don't have to pay for their job. So, I mean, I understand that, that they get paid to do something, they should do it, I guess. I mean, but not that I'm against your full-time person. I'm just saying, I, I don't, I guess I'm not going to have any sympathy for surveyors. They're charging arm and a leg right now.
Right.
Way more than, and what I just recently learned, they're charging five times what they charged me not that long ago. So I don't have any sympathy for surveyors, so, personally.
Okay. It's just right now, in my opinion, until we figure out what's going to happen with the sheriff's office and their budget and their three positions, um, to hold off on, because they could make, they could need help with something. And I think we should, in my opinion, hold off on making any decisions until we see how they're going to fare.
Well, I will make a motion to approve Laura moving her part-time position to full-time position, since you have the money. Rosari and Susan said we have the money for the benefits. That's my motion.
I would ask that we table it for one week. I apologize, Laura.
Okay.
I second that motion. That you table it one week.
Okay.
Okay, very good. Any discussion? Aye?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Susan Bancroft. Morning.
Um, I'm going to kind of turn this over to Clifton to talk about the bank bids.
Okay.
So, and I just didn't bring mine. Well, it's pretty simple. They're all pretty close at the end of the day. You know, when you got these landmarks, it was pretty much the same as it was the last time, I believe, right?
Very close.
You know, they're, they're charging, they're going to pay us, I can't remember, 90% of fed rate? Is that the correct term? Fed rate? But we're really honestly not sure that that's happening today, to be quite honest. I think it's something we need to look into. According to something I saw in here, it looked like they were paying us about only 10% of the fed rate. But anyway, they're charging fees. Citizens Bank, um, it's pretty simple. You're going to pay, huh, duh-duh-duh-duh, You're gonna pay, huh, duh, 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 a two, two and a quarter percent. That was at the old 3.83 Fed rate in November, I believe. That was a Fed funds rate for November. I'm not sure what the Fed's fund rate ended in December, but that would be calculated off of that. And no fees. I mean, it's as simple as it gets.
And brutal. So you're, it's always 90%?
No, 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 no. He's, that's a different bank.
Oh, a different bank, I'm sorry, okay.
So, so.
Okay.
You know, in UMB was really, really similar, in my opinion, to Landmark. Susan, correct me if I'm wrong, very similar, but that, it was actually a little more difficult to figure out. Still not even sure I got it figured out, right? But they're gonna charge fees also. I think, I mean, I like the KISS method, keep it simple stupid. Don't get any simpler than that. I'm gonna pay you X, and we're not gonna charge any fees, and there you go. So I, and it's a, to me, it's a, it's a smaller, I, I don't wanna say smaller bank, but it certainly feels like a smaller bank. A much more hometown bank, in my opinion. So my, my vote is to change, we haven't changed in five years, I think.
What I like about the no fees is you potentially can have stop payments often, and there's no dollar amount that you could put on that, other than they charge a $25 fee, you know, at the other banks. I think it was 25. Might have been a little bit higher than that, so.
So, I mean.
That's just one example.
At the end of the day, they're all really close, to be truthfully. One is just gonna pay you interest. Everything else is just there. The others are a whole heck of a lot more complicated. So my, my vote's pretty simple. I want to be, go with the simpler solution, which is Citizens Bank down on, I guess by Arby's, in between Arby's and O'Reilly's. That would be my recommendation. I don't know what Susan's is.
I second that.
So it's a motion, so I'll make a motion then to, to move our accounts to Citizens. I think it, yeah, that's my motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. I think it will be a, it will take some time. I think it's going to be very, very important that Patty, Susan, and Ashley, I assume, because she's involved in that too, all three, all three will be, have to work extraordinarily closely together to get this done in a timely manner. I don't, I mean, I just, I, I want, I'd like it to be smooth. My opinion is this should be looked at every, sooner than five years?
I would say every three.
Every three to five, probably three. And had been looked at in five, we just keep doing it. I asked about it last year, why would we do that? And they just, well, it's a simple one.
There will be probably.
So my discussion is, is, I guess it's, I just would ask that all three people work closely to get this done in a timely manner.
There'll be a couple of months that you'll have several bank accounts open to, to get everything shifted over, if that's the way you go.
Well, we have a motion, we have a second. Any other discussion? Alon Taver, aye?
Aye.
Thank you, Clifton. Susan, thank you.
The next thing that I have on there is section two for the employee handbook. It really just talks about the at-will employment. When I'm passing out is the only correspondence that I received back. And it was more just about the process of how we're doing the handbook at this time. So I feel like this is a very small portion that there didn't, you know? It is what it is. There wasn't a whole lot of changes to it. Ashley, did you get a copy?
I don't see any issue with it. Kansas is an at-will state. We're in at-will county. Again, shouldn't be much more complicated than that.
I agree. That's pretty simple. And it's all state guidelines.
You have no, there's, you have no guarantee of a job. I mean, sorry, but that's the state of Kansas. No different than where I work, or if you work in Kansas, that's just the way the world is, so.
So is that a motion to accept section two?
I'll make a motion to accept section two, that we are an at-will. I mean, to adopt section two stating basically we're at-will. Yep.
Second.
Any discussion?
I guess the only discussion is all department heads had a chance to, you know, review this and make some changes.
Yes, it was sent to everyone.
Yeah, I mean, it's pretty simple, so.
I mean, it's, it's, this is pretty much what Kansas does, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, it showed everybody that it was sent to, so.
All right.
Alon Taver, aye?
Aye.
I guess unless a person wanted not be at-will.
And broker selection. Assured Partners, which was the group that we recommended at that last several meetings ago, they sent us kind of like a service timeline. We have been approached by a local vendor asking that we give them an opportunity to come in, and so I, the chairman has asked that we interview them, and so I'd be open to that, if that's what you would like to do.
And I appreciate that, the committee working with this local.
Sure.
Company person, because we need to give them opportunity if they qualify. So I think we need to stay on, visit with them, and see if we can make it work with Bourbon County, because they do live here. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yep, so we can set that up.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I'm on that committee. I have no issue meeting with them.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Dil Van Wart-Bolton sent their letter. I think it was attached to the agenda, just stating that they will no longer be doing county audits, and so we'll need to search out a audit firm for the 2022 audit. Probably need to do that sooner rather than later.
So I read the, read what they sent. I would, I would personally like to have Susan reach out to the firm in Wichita that they recommended.
Okay.
If that's okay with the other two commissioners, to see if they can do it.
It's a great idea.
Because they, they recommended a, a firm, unless there's a local here. I know that there is, you know, they, I mean, they're not the only firm in town, but I know the, the, I, I know that, that a couple of those others around here won't do that and don't have any interest in doing it, so.
Yeah, these people are actually out of Chanute, Jared Gilmore and Phillips.
Oh, Chanute, sorry. I thought it was from anywhere.
Yep. So, yeah, I'd be more than happy to reach out to them. Okay. November financials, we'll get those to you the next meeting. I actually took a couple of weeks of vacation towards the end of the year, so I got that right before I, I went on vacation, so I didn't get it completed. I actually took a vacation. Ready payments, probably need to talk about that. We've been holding some payments, and so just wanna have some discussion about how you wanna handle that. As we close down the year, that'll be important, that we get that in the current fiscal year. If we are not going to pay them, then we need to discuss that as well.
I mean, I hate to talk about an entity that isn't here to defend themselves.
Okay, so you're gonna put it on the next meeting?
So we can table that one, I think.
How, how long before you will close down the, the year as far as accounts payable?
I mean, we probably need to go ahead and make that last one.
I mean, we'll have period 13, are you talking about period 13?
How long will we have it up until?
I mean, we need to go ahead and make that last payment.
Yeah, and I agree with that. If we made a commitment on our last payment, we probably should do it.
Going forward, we may need to talk about it a little bit.
Perfect. So we'll get those, because there was a couple of payments that needed to be made, so we'll get those cleaned up. I think that's all I have for today.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Shane Walker.
Yeah, the only thing I need to talk about is the hospital building. We're kind of about halfway through transitioning them to their own stuff. Kind of waiting on them for some guidance as to what they're wanting to do about phones and things like that. Crocker and I've got stuff set up to where we can flip it over probably any time. So as soon as we can get some other stuff in place here in the next week or two, we'll probably do that. And then we're gonna remain in that building with infrastructure, because we're connected to EMS there. And then we use it to go back around to the other side of town, where we can get back into the jail from either side of town and from Public Works and everything else. We're tying all that together. So that's kind of where we're at with that. Probably no more in a week or two. And then we're gonna start upgrading everything in here. So we're gonna have to run fiber in between offices and switches and that'll be a 20-year upgrade that we don't have to touch for a long time.
Thank you.
That's it.
Sounds good, Chuck.
Thank you very much. I wanna take a break. We're on executive session. Okay, take a five-minute break, please.
They, they have to install a new chairman, but they, Jim, they need.
They like the.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, that's one.
That's the only thing of note.
Didn't look like a change.
I seen a message from one of his friends, and his father's in trouble. But they had him sedated and subdued, brain induced coma, on a ventilator. See, that was crazy.
That was the last thing you're having.
I saw a deal. It's like one of them, that when he hit that guy, when I got hit in the chest, you know, when the collision happened, it just, depending on where your heart is and rhythm and everything, he just.
I didn't see it hit.
I think he got up.
He probably left.
I think he got up.
It was just, I mean, it was just a hit.
Yeah, what even?
Was it a vicious hit?
Well, I saw some vicious hits the last seven days, but I thought, I hadn't that roughened somebody.
It's gotta be a spine injury, it's gotta be a spine, I like that. He was just, he was spotted, he stood up.
So he'd be classified as cardiac arrest.
That's exactly what they're calling it. That dude hit the ground hard, didn't he? Yeah, he was dead, wasn't he, for a little bit? Yeah. Yeah. You know, I'm surprised we don't see more of that football. That's a violent sport.
My mom was last night, was watching it, and said, my daddy's never been in this sport.
Well, you know, and we have a hard time now, local, high school, because of those problems.
Comotio coris.
That, that, yeah, the, the hospital hasn't released that, that's just what people were saying about.
The voice is cute, you brought him in the other day. Oh, I can tell, we're looking at him. I kinda got that impression also, so just listen to him talk, so.
You know, it's all about a player at this point, but the, the thing they gotta figure, how are they gonna, this is an important football game. You know, taking that whole part of it out of.
Yeah. They don't know that they'll make it up.
All right, so we either give them a tie on each, then they've got one less win. How do you work that out?
There's a winning percentage.
There's a reason that baseball players wear chestplates. That's it.
Okay, we're ready to sit. We can move my executive session after public comment if we'd like.
Yeah, sounds like a good idea.
Keep, and. It's gonna be about 20 minutes executive session. That, that don't bother you? All right. Let's go for it then, executive session. What about non-lecter personnel? Three commissioners.
Make a motion to executive session, case A 7543, 19B1, discuss personal matters of individual, personal, director privacy, job performance, job duties, three commissioners, and that's it. It'll be for 20 minutes. We will return here at 10:25.
Second.
Any discussion? Alon Taver, aye?
Aye.
Okay, back in session?
Make a motion to go back in session. In this room, no action.
Second.
In discussion, on favor, aye. Public comment, please.
That's major.
I will say this much, the county does need to look forward. And I've sit through meetings, our county registered deeds. And she has told you all, and that's a good thing, that within a couple of years, or we don't know, six months, say a year, if she retires and her second command retire, there's going to be nobody in that office that's trained. And if you don't have somebody training there, y'all is going to be hurting for certain. And I've seen this in the county that where people got into positions that didn't have the 10 years of training, and the county's had problems ever since. So that's forward thinking, and she was good enough to come and let you all know that that could happen. All right. The second one I will say, and I don't know it all, but when I first moved up there where I was at, they put a culvert in. And when they put that culvert in, they put in Road Rock. And this was, I think, even before you. And so what happened, I kind of snivelled to myself, and I said, "Boy, they don't know what they're doing. Boy, that's rough, that's rough." And I think they left it like that for three or six months, and then they come back and put gravel over the top of it. And guess what? That place is smooth as a baby's behind.
No, not that, exactly.
Yeah, and the same thing when they're talking about Yale Road. You're wasting your money if you don't take and go all the way back. Thank you.
Well, Yale Road is a project I hope we start someday because those folks deserve a good road, but they're just steps we have to take.
Oh, I know.
During the process to make it work.
I know there was times that I drove Yale Road. I don't live up there, but I did go up to Blue Mountain and stuff. And my wife did home healthcare, and she drive that road. And I'm going to tell you what, you could drop a front wheel in one of those potholes and take your whole front end out.
And as Eric mentioned, you patch one week, the next week, the pothole's next to the patch.
I'm with you.
It's a tough situation.
Yep.
Well, I appreciate it.
Lie. Mission comment, you stand there.
I just have a question. The county committed to help fund Ready for three years. When will that be up?
Next year? This year, sorry. This is the third year, I believe.
Oh, yeah, this is January, isn't it? Yeah, this is the third year.
I believe so.
So, if, if, and that was some of, that money came from pilot funds. What, remind me what the total pilot payment is.
Three twenty-seven? Three fifty? No, it is more than that. It's three fifty-seven, three seventy-five, somewhere in there.
Okay, so...
Just say three fifty, three seventy-five, just off the top of my head.
So barring any new projects, and let's say, I mean, the hope is, or the plan in my head anyway, is that Ready is self-funded.
That was what, that's what, I mean, that's the only reason I voted for it two years ago.
Yes, that's the understanding I had as well. So by 2024, there would be this 300 whatever.
125. The other...
Oh, correct, correct. There would be 125.
There's 250 being spent other places.
Correct.
It's being used to reduce the levy.
Yes, okay, thank you. Being used to reduce the levy, some other projects, and so there...
And the pilot funds are from?
The windmills.
The windmills.
The 125 from the windmills, so... Okay, so I guess I would just caution, you know, we have a lot of needs now that some funds need to go towards. And so I guess I would just caution against new projects that would need to be funded.
I agree.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Ben? Anything? Okay. Mission comment?
I have no comment.
So, I said I did, and so I, I think nationwide, our economy is changing significantly. I, you know, from a sales tax standpoint, from multiple things, with interest rates now at seven, eight percent or more on a mortgage, 25 percent or something crazy on credit cards and everything else, it's all gone up. No different than, who was saying, Ashley, was talking about prices going up, I think, twice, right? Kona and then something else. So, let's just go back to the all prices going up, that's for everybody. Well, we don't have revenues going up. We actually could have revenues going down. So with that, I think I would like to discuss or probably make a motion to do a temporary hiring freeze for Bourbon County. Because we don't, until we have more money, until we have more knowledge of our financial situation today, I would ask for a hiring freeze for Bourbon County.
Ashley and Susan, we get our first tax distribution in March, is that correct? Get one, January, then we get a second one in March? We get four a year.
It's a small one.
Yeah, okay.
Very small in March.
Okay. So that'd be an indicator of the next, this one and the next one. And of course, we don't know what, I agree with Cliff, what cell taxes we're going to do.
We got a tight, meaning, and I've said this before, we've got to tighten our belts, and we'll now actually mean it.
Nelson, any comment?
Yeah, I second that.
You second that?
I second the motion.
We're going to talk about yours next week.
Assuming we have, because we didn't know exactly if, you know, the, if we could do that. So, but I mean, I agree that we have to tighten the old belts until we figure out what's going on.
Susan, will you be more comfortable in March for revenues or April? What it looks like our season might, yearly's?
End of January will help us determine what our cash carry is going to be because she will have all of her accounts payable in period thirteen, so that will like take care of all the December expenses. And so that'll give you an idea of if we hit our targets for budget. If we do not, then yes, there will have to be cuts made in the current year.
So I would like to at least revisit it after that date.
But I guess I, to add to that, like the, I know that they're looking at possibly hiring an SRO. I don't know if that would apply to that since the school district's paying for it. I don't want to, I don't want to put a stop to that. I know, but we're good, we're good for the school year, we're good past that date, so...
I didn't know the school district was paying for it.
The SRO moving forward is funded to the grant or MOU to end of the school year.
Seventy-five percent pay.
Yeah, as we have in last year. Beginning of next school year, we did not budget any funding for any SRO at U-234 or U-235. And they're aware of that. So if they have one, it would not be a county employee. Because we are the only ones can enter MOU with a school board for a SRO or any other position.
I don't know that we even have one now, as far as...
Yeah, I read it.
Oh, you did?
We have one. And it's good till end of the school season, I checked.
Okay.
It matched the grant perfect, which was good, but...
So you suggested until when, then?
Well, at least until first week of February, until we get those numbers back.
Okay, well, that wouldn't affect, regardless, that wouldn't affect that position either, so...
No, you're talking this fall.
I'm talking about one month. For now, we, as a commission, revisit it the first week of February. I, my opinion is things are not going to be rosy. Things are not going to be good. I know things cost more in my house. I could be really shocked if it doesn't cost more in this house.
Yeah. Can we have a motion, we have a second?
Yeah.
In discussion? We already had a discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. First of February. Any other commission comment? I have one that, for Susan's help, the commission's okayed it sometime in the past. We do have a town hall meeting scheduled January 25th, 6:00 PM at the Empress Center. I think that's what it's called. One of the things on the agenda, I would like to get on there, and I'm visiting Rob and other people, make sure we do this right, is housing. And we have a housing problem in Bourbon County. And everyone, meeting I go to, we talk about the housing, but no one has a plan. And maybe there is no plan, but it's time we either make a plan or quit talking about it, one or the other. And I would like that to be on the first part of the agenda. The second part of the agenda, I want to open up to the public and have a real town hall meeting discussion with the public, what their concerns and their questions, et cetera. So that's 6:00 PM, January 25th. And I'll make a motion now that all commissioners will be there.
January 25th?
Yeah.
6:00 PM?
6:00 PM.
Second.
When was our, were we going to have another night meeting in January, or did I dream that?
I didn't think in January.
Okay.
We talked about it. Then we probably ought to want to talk, but we want to go off slightly like we did last year, I don't know.
I believe we should. I think it was well attended in places. We still haven't had one in the Northeast. So I guess I would ask that we have one in the Northeast part of the county at, probably at Fulton or the Hammond Community Center, either one. And have a, have a deal there, be great.
February work, you think?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we'll work around, work around Nelson's schedule.
Are you talking about a night meeting, or?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, it doesn't matter what time to me, I don't care. Five, seven, I mean, better at six so people can show up.
Yeah.
Who has a better facility, Fulton or Hammond? I don't know. I'm good with either one, so...
You know, I don't know, there's cost involved. So if Susan could reach out to Misty, probably for Fulton, and I'm not positive on Hammond anymore, but I can find out.
Okay. Good idea. Any other commission comment? We do have everything squared away for the hospital, check, paperwork, et cetera, that we had a problem with last week.
Yes, we had never run an invoice before, and he was able to receive that and walk the, took the check over to him.
Thank you. I just want to make sure you did.
Yes.
I wouldn't say it's your fault, I just want to make sure it did happen.
She took it over.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much.
No invoice?
We hadn't received one.
That's nice.
Yeah, okay.
Then we requested.
Any other discussion?
Okay, did I just miss it, the motion, everyone be there, was that second and...
I don't know.
Second.
In discussion, all in favor, aye.
On the 25th?
Yeah. Okay, yes. And we'll set up a town hall meeting and do a Hammond or Fulton for paperwork, I think. Motion's adjourned?
Second.
Here, second.
Yeah, he seconded.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll turn my hearing aids up there. Any discussion, all in favor, aye.